Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting, 31 May. We've got a variety of items to cover tonight. Filling a Board of Assessors vacancy. We're going to be talking about way ahead on the Center School. Also, talking about kind of a way ahead on town meetings, discussion about the Town Hall renovations and where we go from here. DPW is going to have some comments about our addressing the water and sewer rates, something we know we need to do and have at least an initial cut in place for this fall's billing. Have some contracts to award. We'll be dealing with Prospect Court Bridge project. Finally, we're getting contract ready to go out on that for the planking. Got some appointments to committees, Recreation and Conservation. Talk about the cleaning services. We'll be acting on Colonial Power Agreement. They were in here a few, a couple of months ago. We're acting as well on, in follow-up to town meeting, on the Smith Academy Park acceptance. Again, acting follow-up to town meeting on the pilot agreement, payment in lieu of taxes with Hatfield Renewables, and then some other things. We have delayed for one week, excuse me, until our next meeting, the reorganization of the board. To begin, public forum, and you know, Bob, you had one item you wanted to bring up regarding...
Yeah, I'm here to talk about the debris that was left behind as a result of the construction of the high-speed rail. This first kind of came to my attention in the spring of 2015 when Northampton, the fire chief especially down there, was trying to get the railroad to remove a big, big pile of railroad ties, and he was concerned about a fire. And I kind of looked around and I saw that all the crossings, the gateways to our town, and I think you have the photos, had junk, rubbish everywhere that was just strewn as a result of the construction. And it's the, it's the North Hatfield Road, Depot Road, Plain Road are the entrances to our town. And we take care of our property in town, and if one of our neighbors doesn't take care of our property, then we ask them to clean it up or get them to clean it up anyway. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the people in town are proud of their property and they keep the lawn straightening. And if you had a contractor at your house and he did some work and he left all this junk around, you wouldn't be very happy with it. There's also a pile of railroad ties. If you cross at Chestnut Street and look south, you can barely see it. It's way down past Rockaway Smith. I took a photo of it as best I could from the public right-of-way because I couldn't, I didn't want to go down the railroad. Last year, when it came to my, I called Representative Coquart's office because he was involved with Northampton, and I said, "What about Hatfield?" And I talked to his aide, Diana Zinal, who's from town, and she said, "Oh yeah, I noticed that when I crossed after I brought it to her attention." So the Representative Coquart and one, another representative from the area had a meeting with the railroad. I don't know which department or which railroad, and they were going to take care of it by July. Well, nothing happened, and I don't know if they moved ties from Northampton up here. So, I don't know. All of a sudden, I, they're, they're really hard to see because they're way down the tracks. I think it could be a safety issue, you know, it's just a welfare issue, I think. There's also hardware at, like at the North Hatfield Road Crossing, or D, I'm sorry, Depot Road Crossing, there's hardware there. And I would think if somebody put that on the tracks, the high-speed rail comes through, it could, the train could fall off the track. Conservation Commission had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. The railroad is looking for noticement tent or something to spray, and I came to that meeting thinking I would bring it up then, but no one from the railroad showed up. So, I, I talked to the Conservation Commission, but it fell on deaf ears of the railroad because there was no one here. So, I came to see you folks. I know Chief Beldon, again, last year, had been talking to the railroad about cleaning up those ties on North Hatfield Road. Because let's face it, if those ever caught on fire, it'd, it'd be a disaster with the smoke and fumes and all that sort of stuff. But all the railroad has given anybody, even I think Coquart's office, is lip service. They haven't done anything, so I don't know what the next step is, you know?
Just, we normally don't take this on, but just to set the record, Chief Gahn, Fire Chief Gahn, about, I was a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago now, has taken on the issue from a safety perspective, and was originally talking about that pile behind or side of, stride of Rockaway Smith and dealing with that, and had met with the other chiefs along the way. And there was some agreement reached at that point with DOT, who is now responsible for all that, about taking a certain portion of each community's pile. But as you say, I keep looking at down, coming down Chestnut Street, and our pile has not, has not gone down. So, obviously, despite Stephen's best, best efforts here, it hasn't, hasn't resulted in a real way ahead. So, I think this is, we're, we're at the point as well to go to our elected representative again, ask Representative Coquart for his assistance. And we could outline, we could use some of the materials you have there. We could bring in what Mr. Chief Gahn has already done. You could outline the actions he's taken and with little or no results and try and pull it...
There's the pile of ties, which is a...
Yes.
Could become a health issue, and with the interstate there, I mean, it may have to shut down. But there's also the debris issue.
Safety thing.
It just doesn't look good.
Yeah, well, as you mentioned though, if it was on the tracks or some other, could presumably be a safety issue as well, as well as aesthetic. So, appreciate you bringing it to light again.
Apparently, nobody else notices it or something, I saw, but...
You can't miss it when you go down Chestnut Street.
What about bringing Town Council into the process from a liability point of view? So, they can't say two things: we never knew, and secondly, we're not aware of the liability involved. And this way, they've been told, and along with the other things that hopefully will be done, but putting extra pressure on them, the thing they understand is the pocket. That's what they understand very well.
It's DOTs.
And we're talking money, somebody gets hurt on there, they've got a tough situation because they had prior knowledge. I'm not playing lawyer here, it's just playing common sense. Common sense. And so, maybe that's, that's the road of pressure. Maybe Marlene might, you might want to touch base on that with, not just Representative Coquart's office, but the offenders themselves. This is the course we're going to take. We're not fooling around anymore. End of story, hopefully.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, perhaps we, we address the letter to the Department of Transportation and copy Representative Peter Coquart.
I think we should give him...
Give the state one more shot.
We should give him a heads-up that that's what we're doing ahead of time, because this is not the first time he's heard this issue either.
Okay.
Board of Assessors is not here. HRA, Larry?
You don't, you're doing it out of order?
Yes, because Board of Assessors is not here yet. Now, is this our, our...
Well, the...
I had asked it to be put on, and I say it's listed as HRA.
The Center School topic was already on the agenda.
Okay.
I received an email from Larry, the RA was interested in discussing it with the Selectmen, so I just combined them.
Well, we have the decision at town meeting regarding timelines to take certain actions. And, you know, my takeaways were, one, we need to do the appraisal as clean with the remediation complete and whatever that number is to comply with the law. We need to do the survey in two parts of the survey. One, that which would convey with the sale, but the second, another article there was the conservation restriction on the back end, so we might as well have one survey or do both. Contract for the remediation, and then develop the RFP, which is based on, we have, was a 2008 template that we can clean up.
And that's what provided...
We can clean up from, from the guidance from town meeting and, and developed the criteria for selection and, and get it out. So, I mean, we have lots of work to do and there's not a hell of a lot of time. Excuse my French.
Well, I just, I mean, it's, our concern was time already. Three weeks have gone by, and it doesn't seem anything's been done.
We haven't met since town meeting.
What's that?
We've not met since town meeting.
I know, but there could be a lot of progress. Chris did meet with Marlene, and the 2008 RFP probably isn't the best template to, to serve as going forward for a number of reasons, which Lynn could talk about, but we will give you tonight a revised RFP template draft that we, that was based on the, we used. And it's a legal RFP, unlike the 2008 one wouldn't qualify anymore because of the lack of scoring and some other technical stuff that I don't fully understand.
Well, you have to have how you're going to score the, what you get.
But I think in the interest of time, this one will serve, will move it along a little faster than that. Also, there was this idea of the abatement certainly, at least according to the article, has to be done, and the existing contract that was for the demolition, again, that really can't serve as any basis for this because it was, it's not what we'd be bidding for the...
Actually, we can do a change order and we coordinate it with legal...
But there'd be no reason to stay with the same vendor. It's over a year old now, and it could probably be bid cheaper. And there's even a possibility that the RFP for the sale might ask the developer if he would take the alternative of abating, like we talked about at other meetings, that it may be possible that the private developer would actually pay less for the abatement, and that may be a consideration. But you'll see some of that in that RFP. I guess what we wanted to meet about is interest in time and what is the timeline? What's the plan? Is there going to be, who's going to manage this process? Is it going to be a committee? Do, we'd like to offer HRA. Nobody in the town knows more about the situation than we, the three of us right now. And so, we don't know, we don't want another two months to go by than the 90 days, you're up against a deadline of 90 days for the RFP to be issued. So, I don't know, you haven't met, so I don't know how much thought you've given, but we came here to give you the RFP. I want, Chris and Lynn will have something to say, and also to offer that we could be part of this plan. I mean, with, I don't know how necessary things like an appraisal are going to, how valuable that's going to be. Certainly, the survey work, a lot of this could be done concurrently.
Yeah.
I don't think it should be done A, B, C and try to work it that way.
You do the appraisal as clean?
Yeah, oh yeah, assuming that the abatement was done.
Right.
And so, you know, I don't know what, we'd like to just make it sure it's on, stays on the tracks.
I understand.
And the, but the ball gets down the field would be our goal. And, you know, you haven't met, you haven't reached out to us to help, or what is, is there going to be another way to do it? Are you going to manage it? Is Marlene going to manage it? I think this project's pretty simple. It, it's not the kind of thing that we did in 2008 where you had a committee and there were a lot of discussions and alternatives and everything. We boiled it down to the essence.
You're absolutely right. I mean, it, it's clear kind of the track ahead here, and by and large, Marlene can, will handle most of the paperwork and coordinate with our attorney on getting it on the street. Where you really could come in, that can help, is marketing. You, you've been out there earlier with your RFP. Nothing really surfaced at the time, but you perhaps have developed some contacts there and...
Yeah, I'm glad you bring that up, Jeff, because what we did learn a lot from last fall is kind of what not to do, if you will. We had said...
Just come send it out if you...
Well, not only that, but kind of feel for what the market would bear and so on. The why, how we came together on the 55 and over was basically looking at the market. What was driving that? And talking to the people that market real estate and successful projects. And so, that came from that. And then the other was, we had tried putting a, an initial bid at $50,000. A lot of people looked at that and said, "Whoa, wait a minute, you know, why don't you start at a dollar?" And then, and then offer other incentives. So, you'll see in this RFP, a lot of what we learned, we've translated into the language of this RFP.
Oh, and I just want to interrupt, the idea of a bid price, we learned that from Laura Lee about, it turns out, if the sale price of a surplus property is less than $100, there's advantageous borrowing that she's able to do. And that was great to find out about because that would be relevant to the abatement project. So, that's a factor when setting the price. It's not like this knee-jerk reaction, "Well, we're going to spend $100,000 to abate it, so the minimum price is going to be $100,000." It really, that isn't how the calculus should be in this, and I think you'll see some of that in the RFP.
Have you spoken with the abator already? Because I think it would behoove us to go out for bid for the abatement versus a change order. I don't know if they've come back with a...
We're planning on doing a change order.
Okay, but it's a different scope of work, though. If it changes the scope of work, you have to go back out to bid.
We can do a change order. It did, the contract does include the abatement and hazardous materials removal.
Have they come back with a...
I have, I talked with the engineer last week. Actually, I'm meeting with him tomorrow.
So, they haven't given a price, a change order, a price yet?
The change order would be to take it, take the whole, take that portion of the contract out of order. That would be separate. We're going to allow them to move forward with the asbestos removal.
Right, but what, at what cost?
Well, the cost they gave me was $175,000.
But we, in speaking with people...
Three other vendors.
Three other vendors.
Right.
It's a lot less, a lot less than that, and I think it would behoove us to go out for bid.
The Selectmen awarded a contract.
Pardon?
The Selectmen awarded a contract.
Well, that was a year ago.
Right, and, and they said they would hold the price. So, we have a contract.
Hold it for 90 days.
Yeah, the price is held, but the contract could, is, could be negated after 90 days.
That's a decision of the Selectmen.
They did you a favor, they, they held the price, which would save you rebidding it if you, but I don't think, you're not held, you're not bound by that contract anymore.
Well, I have consulted with Town Council, and he agrees with the change order.
But I think we can get a better price for the town if we go out, back out to bid because it's a different scope of work now.
There's no roof abatement.
Right, we understand that.
Right.
We were looking at numbers closer to $100,000.
Right, so the 175 did include, we know, the roof, the windows, and the basement, other areas.
But that, as part of the change order, you would get rid of some of the...
And, and I did tell the, the engineer it would not include the roof.
I guess, I mean, I don't know why you would go that approach if, if the contract's not enforceable right now. If you went, look at rebidding it. We, we found three vendors that within a week, well, one within a week, others within two weeks, gave us answers that it's not a big deal to rebid the abatement.
Yeah.
So...
It's a change, it's a change in scope. I, I don't know, I just, I think with this market and there's so many vendors out there to solicit that we could probably do better for the town.
Well, I have a meeting tomorrow with the, with the engineer, so we'll be discussing, you know, potential change order.
And see what they come back at for...
I, I would expect that they probably would reduce the price if we're taking the roof out of it.
I had misunderstood you. I thought you said $175,000 for the...
Well, 175 included all the asbestos and hazardous materials. Yeah, removal. But now, we're just talking about the inside, excluding the roof.
Mike, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, the, whether or not you do an RFP for the, another RFP for the, for the hazmat removal, notwithstanding, I'm, I'm just thinking about the, the team that's going to do this. And with all due respect to Marlene, I had, just off the top of my head, a couple of days ago, had run through a, almost a critical path plan of activities that would have to be done in order for this to happen. And I had a list of like 25 to 30 activities, steps, including RFPs, including evaluating RFPs, including interviewing developers, including, including touring the building, including Q and A sessions with developers. I, quite frankly, just can't imagine that Marlene is going to be able to handle all of that as an overlay atop of her normal responsibilities. And, you know, I just...
Well, I handled the process previously. We've been through it four times.
Pardon?
I said, "I've handled the process previously. We've been through it four times." And, and while this is an outdated RFP, it certainly can be used as a guideline.
Right, right, but I, you know, what I...
You're, you're offering up some...
Yeah, what I, what I, what I, what I was thinking about is, is a, is putting together a team, including Marlene. Marlene would be on this team, maybe one of the Selectmen would be on this team, and the HRA is a nucleus that would be responsible for basically developing a plan and implementing that plan, which ultimately would, would end up in the sales, the successful sale of that building by, you know, within 270 days. And that team would, would keep the Selectmen informed on an ongoing basis, and because it is a team that would be, obviously, be able to, to share some of the duties and responsibilities that have to be, have to be carried out. I, I think this is, this is a rather complicated process, and I, with all due respect to Marlene, you know, and I, I have the utmost respect for her saying, like, "Well, I've done this before, I can do this myself." Well, yeah, but it would be great, I think, to have someone there that can really lend a hand and help her go through this process. And that's what I was thinking. I was thinking first, who's going to do this? You know, can we form some committee or team that's, that could put this together and enhance the likelihood that this is going to happen successfully within nine months? And so, that's, that was my thought.
Anyone else back there? Anyone else have anything? Yes, sir.
Looking at topic seven.
Okay.
You know, if I may, Jeff.
Yes.
I, for one, do not have a problem with the team approach. I think the smaller the team, the better, however. So, so having said that, I, and this is no reflection on the HRA as a whole, I think a member of HRA should be part of that team. A Mike, if you're willing to, you know, a member of the board, and, and Marlene. I mean, just, you know, four or five people at the most that, you know, could, could work together, you know, we could try it that way. I think if you have the whole board, it just changes, whether it were the whole board of Selectmen or the whole board of HRA or any whole board, I think it changes the dynamic somewhat. But to have a member from each, I think is, is fair. HRA certainly has the history over the last year and prior, and I, I think it gives a vested interest to everybody to be able to do it and to lighten Marlene's load, and I agree with you, certainly...
Time is a factor.
Is, is a capable woman, but, but time is a factor, and, and there's other things happening in town besides that building, right? So, you know, as long as we all realize that. So, I think we've gotten our marching orders from town meeting, which is you have so many days to get the bid out to, to, you know, get it purchased, and we will continue as we always do to follow town meetings directive. So, that's, that's my take on it.
Anything else tonight?
Well, following up on Brian's, then, you're meeting again in what, two weeks?
Next week, right.
Next week?
The 28th, possibly.
No, the 11th or, probably in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Well, that's our regularly scheduled meeting. It doesn't mean something else can't...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Rushing here, the 14th, yeah, I'm ahead of myself here.
I guess where I'm going with this is, it sounds like a nice plan, that's a good plan. You know, if we, we, between the three of us, you know, have a representative, perhaps yourself for the Select Board and Marlene.
And Mike. There's four people.
There you go. If that's agreeable, then maybe go forward on that basis, start the conversation, and then start at your next meeting with a plan, saying, "Okay, this is, the survey is going to be done at this time. The cleanup's going to be done at this time. This is how much it's going to cost. The RFP will go out at this time," and so on, and have a solid plan for the next meeting.
Set that milestone so we can work...
Yeah, yeah. If that's agreeable to you, that might be a good working...
Well, we need, we need first to regroup ourselves. Again, this is our first session since town meeting and...
And frankly, I don't think it's fair to expect that we're going to do this right now, this evening and such.
We're not.
Not in favor.
Oh, of course not.
Absolutely not. And the other thing that I'm concerned about, and I think it's been allayed somewhat, is that no particular committee, including this one, be overrepresented on that group.
No, we, we are the responsible party.
Absolutely. What they, what they secure comes back to us.
So, no one's abrogating our responsibilities.
Yeah, I think Brian outlined that.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, appreciate, appreciate the offer.
I appreciate Brian bringing that up, that, and Mike, you know...
Why don't you share your...
I think it's fine, I would, I would be willing to, to be part of that.
Share your bird chart.
Yeah, I, I'm, my other concern is just, just time. And, you know, I, I think, you know, the flowchart that I had developed had a committee being appointed this evening. And quite frankly, I don't understand why that couldn't happen. Choose one, one Selectman, Marlene, me, and one other person or two other people, five sounds like a, you know, sometimes if that committee has to vote or something, an odd number is, might be helpful. And, and move ahead and report back to you guys in two weeks, or less for that matter. That's what I'd like to see happen because by then, it will be five weeks into, since town meeting.
We'll meet all our timelines. We will meet all our timelines.
Okay. One, well, let me just digress a little with Marlene was saying about the abatement. I was just thinking that what might be useful, maybe even on the committee, is the building inspector, because he's the one that actually has to define what is acceptable for the use of that building as a residence in terms of the abatement. So, he's a very useful person in, in this early stage of defining the scope of work. It's not just limiting in the roof. It might be other things that he'll relax from the, that very detailed spec that we worked with originally on the demo. So, just, I just threw that out. He's not always somebody that's thought of.
Right.
Sometimes too late, so, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thanks a lot for seeing us at your first meeting.
No, thank you very much.
I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Phil, water and sewer rate review?
Can, excuse me, can we just go back to announcements in minutes, approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And just get that taken care of? Sorry.
Let me go back.
A couple of announcements. One, we have a vacancy on the Conservation Committee, number one. Also, we have a position on the Franklin Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board. As you know, we've become a member there, for a person to represent those with disabilities. And the person, the representative shall be a mobility impaired or have a family member who is mobility impaired, be a caretaker of a person who is mobility impaired, or work for an organization that serves the need of the physically disabled. And it'd be a voting member of the Franklin Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board for, for one year. So, if anyone's interested, please submit your notice of interest to the town administrator. With regard to minutes-
Motion to accept the minutes of Thursday, April seventh, 2016?
Second.
A couple of corrections. There's on page four, the second paragraph under the colonial power proposal belongs under the prior entry, under expedited permitting process.
The colonial power proposal?
Right.
About halfway down that page, Marlene.
Right. I'm just not sure how that's related to the expedited permitting process.
We were, we were talking about putting the expedited permitting process guidelines of what, what properties would be suitable for inclusion in this process. And as selectman Moriarty said, property owners have to want to do this. He's absolutely right. They volunteer to do this. And we had a summary sheet of the criteria, the size, lot, all that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, second paragraph under colonial power belongs with, all right.
Right. It belongs as the last paragraph under expedited permitting process. Subject to that, any other changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go back on track.
Back on track. Center School, we talked about DPW? Water and sewer rates and-
As you know, that, you know, we had asked our consultant engineers of Comprehensive Environment to come up with a structure of rate increases and what will it do? So, you receive that on April first. And obviously, we have to do something, so, I mean, I guess it's a board's decision of what we're gonna do with the rates.
Okay, well, we need, we need to know what the target is, that we need to raise, sewer and water, and then what are the options to reach that target? Now, there's another, there's another piece here in that we've got Dave Prickett-
Correct.
-on board for that major study that's going to play back into the capital requirements and expansion of, of the system. So, that also is going to affect rates, but I think we let that kick off and then come back to that later, when that effort's more mature, probably the end of next year. And then, use CEI's data for this immediate near term, so we can get something into our rates for, rate structure for November.
And I agree a hundred percent. I think that's the way to do it, because that's gonna be a, you know, it's gonna be a task for, you know, for Dave Prickett to do that study on the sewer side.
It'll take him several months.
Yeah. So, right now, I mean, you have in front of you what came in April as far as the structure.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything.
Nor do I.
Well, this was-
Well, let's pick it up at the next meeting. We haven't even seen it, so.
Well, this was from April, so everybody received it.
Right, we did get it.
Oh, previously. Oh, okay.
We would, it gave you the breakdown of what, how much you would raise, at what percentage of the rate increase.
Okay, when do we need to set the rate in order to impact the November? Is it November, first of November billing?
Well, I mean, that's a collector's question, because the previous collector said it had to be done six months prior. The new collector says no, so that's a collector's question, is when she needs that rate set by.
Okay, well, how about having the proposal on the package, in our package for next meeting?
Okay.
And we'll close on, on a way ahead.
Yeah, okay. Because I didn't really want, you know, I, after talking with Dave Prickett and trying to understand how long it was gonna take him to do the sewer side of this, I think it's a wise decision not to jump ahead too quick here, to get that data collected.
But we do need a reasonable timeframe, so that we can move together collectively with your individuals as well as ourselves. I mean, right now, we have very little information.
Yeah, what, what we're talking about, we have some information already collected.
That's why I said very little.
By CEI, but it's not here, so we'll, we'll address that next month, at our next meeting. We have a longer-term effort underway in this sewer master plan that's gonna play into-
Yeah.
-this activity for the longer term, but we need something to put in place for this next billing cycle.
Plus her timeframe, you know, I don't really know what it is, so.
All right, well, find out and-
Well, we will be reading in October, correct? That will be the first billing for the new fiscal year.
Correct.
And the intent was to, to include those new rates from the first-
Well, I think the intent is, we all know we have to do something.
Mm-hmm.
We certainly have guidelines we have to meet within the billing, but we'd also like to let people know as soon as we can.
Absolutely.
In case they decide not to water their lawn or fill their pool or something, right?
Okay. Okay, bring it back next, at the next session. Let's get going on that thing. Sidewalk improvements?
Royce was here last week cleaning up what he was on the punch list. In your packet, there is a change order for the extra work they did in front of the market that wasn't included in the original scope, as well as the reconfiguration over here by the old age home to make it a safe exit across the street, because the original crosswalk went into the driveway. So, we realigned and we did the sidewalks over there. That wasn't in the original scope of work, but after meeting with them and consultant engineer, when they were doing the project, that was the best course of action, to get that sidewalk where it's supposed to be over there, because people were walking across the street going right up our driveway, which was definitely a safety issue. But everything else seems to be done. Again, there are going to be some concerns. I've noticed that. You know, people are still concerned about the lawns, but they still have to come back and guarantee the, the growing of the, of the grass areas that were disturbed, so they replanted what they could, and we'll see how it goes. If it doesn't come up in the fall, they'll be back to do it again, so we're definitely withholding some of the money from them because of that, so.
What's the amount withheld at this point?
It was eight percent withheld, so.
Of the total price?
Yeah.
Not a part, portion of the project?
Was it, what, three-hundred thousand dollars, or three, okay, a little over three-hundred?
Yeah, it was like three-twenty or something like that. Three-sixty.
See, I don't, I don't have a copy of that contract right here. You wanna act on that? Yeah. Are we ready to move on this, Marlene?
The change order?
Yes.
If the board's in agreement with the change order, yes, we can do that.
Yeah. Motion approved, change order. Change order number two. Net change of nine-thousand-three-hundred dollars. Change order requested by Mari- how do you pronounce it, Marius?
Yep.
Contract Concrete Services for additional work as indicated in the change order form and as described by Director DPW.
So, move. Before I second it. Phil, you're okay with that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is that in our signature package? I don't see it. Okay. Conservation Committee? Oh, excuse me. Assessors. We had a vacancy on the Board of Assessors. Given a vacancy, the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen assembled to consider the candidates and act on, act on filling the vacancy, and that is, at the next election, that position comes open for election. And this is vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Williams from the Board of Assessors. Stan?
We reorganized Mike and Ron as the chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. So, I'd just like to recognize Ron as the chairman.
We've had, we had two good candidates. We reviewed both applications, and it's our recommendation that we appoint, the collective boards appoint Scott McCoy as the assessor, to fill the unexpired term.
Okay. Talk to him at all? Wanna talk to the candidates at all, or?
Pardon?
Wanna talk to the candidates at all, or?
Not really. We've, we know the candidates, and we've looked at, we've, we know the credentials, and we've, we've made our recommendation.
And that is for a two-year? Is that what training and the-
We had the option of filling the position or not, or at least recommending it, but it would be difficult to always have a quorum with just two people. So, we feel that we need to appoint someone to fill the remaining two-year term.
So, move on the recommendation of the assessors?
This is a joint vote, and it's a roll call vote.
Well, just, just for, for, I'm sorry, let me just say one thing.
It's fine.
For folks listening, we had two applicants, Mr. Chris Smith, and Mr. Smith has served in a variety of positions in town over the years. He's also served on the Board of Assessors for a number of years. Mr. Scott McCoy is a resident here in town. The spouse is a native town. He's presently working at the, what do they call it?
It's not quite updated, but he, he just started recently as the general manager of Turf Care.
Okay.
He's got twenty years of managerial operational expenses.
Has extensive leadership and management, and budgetary responsibility, and a variety of aspects of business operations.
So, where's his expertise?
Pardon?
Where is his expertise when it comes to assessing?
There is no, this is an elected position. There is no mandatory requirement that anyone have any mandatory expertise in going into the position. After they're in, there's a certain period of time when some training is required. Clearly, expertise is important, but it's not just technical expertise. There's a lot of other things that are important as well. Ability to analyze issues, plan and execute, sound judgment, general business information, or management interpersonal skills. Pardon?
We all know that, Ben.
Go ahead.
Well, I just have to make a comment.
Excuse me, this is not an open debate for the, this is between, this is between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors-
We're gonna vote without meeting the candidates.
Pardon?
So, everyone, you, you three are gonna vote without meeting the candidates or reviewing?
It's based on the recommendation.
I'm based on the recommendation of the-
Big difference.
Well, not much.
Oh, there certainly is, Larry. You and I both know that.
Not really. We still interview people.
Yeah, okay. No, we didn't.
You have a candidate that's been an assessor for sixteen years.
Yeah.
Certified, trained, more certification than the office currently has.
There is a motion on the, on the table.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Oh, second, but it's, it's a roll call.
Yep.
It's a roll call vote.
By both committees.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Boyle, aye.
Unanimous.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you notify Mr. McCoy?
Yes, we will.
And then he's coming in.
We'll notify the town clerk's office as well.
They're so afraid of Smith. I don't understand that.
Excuse me. You don't make that kind of comment at a public meeting on TV. And it's a slight to Mr. Smith. I see it as that. You should know better.
Uh, let's, let's move on.
Enough, let's move on.
Well, I mean, you know, I like that you want to appoint more positions, which I think, I understand, that town meeting, you wanted to, you know, have an appointed assessor, appointed treasurer, because of quality of candidate. So, here was an opportunity to do that via appointment. It's different than an election. Anyone could take, get a signature, but, and it was basically just ignored. It was just, two people recommended, a person that has no qualifications, and they, they got supported. The assessors are such an important office.
That's your assumption. I mean, that-
Mine too, mine too. I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
I don't think that's in the best interest of the town.
The gentleman has a very good resume, a broad background in business, demonstrated ability in solving problems, leading people, leading organizations, making process improvements, managing financial aspects of an organization, strong interpersonal skills, ability to get along with his teammates, ability to get along with his superiors. He's got a solid package. So, you're making an inference that he's, he's not a solid person, and I, I challenge that.
No, I don't know anything about him. I wish we would've seen him, but I make it, the inference I make is that we have somebody that's certified, ready to start work tomorrow morning, that's run for the office, has won in the past, and obviously isn't considered.
Well, this is an assessor's position. I'm sure they're looking at who can best work with them. It's not as though a person would be coming into an op, into an office where no one knew what they were doing. You have two assessors who've been long-term employees there. You have a contract in place. It's been there for some years. You have a assessor's clerk who's had some experience, so it's, it's not an open environment where no one knows what they're doing. You have a structured environment already in place that this person has an opportunity to grow in.
May I ask a question? Do you have a second question?
Yes, sir.
If, if this person was interested in the assessor's job, why didn't he run for the last, when he just had an election?
Why don't you ask him? I don't know.
If I ever see him, I will. I mean-
Please do.
It is, it's like a responsibility to choose the most experienced person for the job, so I'm a little distraught about this pick too. And in my opinion, but it doesn't matter, so I will ask this person.
Sure. Our, our, our objective is to choose the best qualified, given a whole range of circumstances and-
Which you did do tonight, so.
Which we did.
Oh, that's you.
Thank you. Yes, it is.
Yeah, well, it doesn't hold much water.
Well-
I'm not surprised.
Well, thank you for your opinion. I, I read your emails as well. They're about the same caliber. Next one, Cleaning Service Contract?
But, um, we were gonna go do number seven. There's a gentleman here that wanted to, I don't think we hit that one yet, the Prospect Court.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right. We've been going out of order all night, so.
I've heard your followers.
Yes. Prospect Street Bridge.
We're taking that out of order. Or is, oh, that is the first. Well, I did have some things to add. I'll get back to it regarding the Center School. Prospect Street Court. Pedestrian Bridge.
Prospect Court.
Prospect, you have in front of you a copy of the specifications. I have requested the prevailing wages and received those. I know you just received those tonight. Those are pretty well complete- I'm just waiting for a response from Phil regarding some dates that I need to plug into the specifications. So as soon as he gets that to me, that's ready to go. So that will be going out to bid next week.
Okay.
Okay. So included in the specifications are the supplemental specifications I have with what has been submitted by the engineers. So, and this gentleman, you have a question?
Yes, I was on the Capital Historical Commission, excuse me, my name is Lesel Berg. I was on the Capital Historical Commission and I represented the commission with the CPA. And we had a, and we brought it up back, we went to the town floor, it was over down to $193,000. And coming here tonight, I saw that it was topic seven and I'd like to, you know, and I appreciate you telling us that the project is in the works.
It is. It will go out to bid next week.
Okay.
And the, again, I'm just waiting for the DPW director to get back to me to confirm some dates that I.
I did resign from the two committees because of my, but the thing is, like I said, like I told Bob Wagner, I said, well, I can see a footbridge, it's not going to be passable for automobiles or any, everything, just.
Correct.
Just a nice walkway footbridge. Because that part of town up there, so many things you can do with it. I mean, it's beautiful.
It'll be nice once it's done.
Yes, yes. And I appreciate your, thanking you for, it is moving forward.
I appreciate the community preservation contributing to that project.
Yes.
And Les was on that committee whenever, when they approved it. But I apologize, I should, we're talking about the former Prospect Street Bridge. It's now Prospect Court Bridge, I guess. And it's right near the old mill, the water, the dam and the waterfall. And it's kind of a mess as you see it right now, but this would essentially plank it and make it available for pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic. It'll clean up that area. It retains an historic bridge. I forgot the year the bridge was originally put up, but.
The historic value alone.
The historic value and.
The Shattuck Mill and.
The old Shattuck Gun Factory. It is a recreation aspect to it, to this. It's also an economic aspect because certainly that's going to enhance the business at the old mill, the bed and breakfast, be able to just walk out there on a pleasant day and observe the bridge or, I mean, it just, it cleans up the whole area.
I would just, I would just sit here, I said to myself, do I have to keep my eye on the till? I appreciate, thank you very much.
Thank you, Les.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
If you just refer to page two, just want to make sure the Selectmen, and Phil, I had sent you these dates. I expect that you would attend the site visit, the pre-bid site visit. So these are.
I did, I did email you back saying those dates look fine.
Oh, I haven't received anything. So, okay. So I'm anticipating the work scheduled July 15 through October 31st, is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay.
Les, the bid goes to the Central Register for publication on the 8th of June, so.
Next week.
It moves out.
And the only reason.
Contract award is scheduled for the end of June 28th.
And the only reason there was a little holdup is we had to wait to the right time to do, excuse me, the underwater survey for the structure, but it passed with flying colors, so it's good.
Has that underwater survey, excuse me, has that underwater survey been done?
Yes, yes.
Where'd it come out?
It came out good.
I was just going to say that.
Yes.
The structures. Unbelievable.
Yeah, yeah.
That was completed in the fall, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a notice of resignation of Mr. Tim Pichark on the Recreation Committee. And also, there's a. So, is there a motion to accept with regard to the resignation of Mr. Tim Pichark for his years on the Recreation Committee and expression of our appreciation and thanks for his work?
So move.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have here an application by Mr. Thomas Gingras to succeed Tim on the Rec Works at Smith College, very much interested in.
And has done a lot of the work for the last few years as a non-member on behalf of the Rec Committee.
Great.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had a, as I mentioned at the beginning, a resignation of Mr. Chanda Damski from the Conservation Committee. Anyone's interested, please submit your notice, note of interest. Cleaning services contract, Marlene?
I'd asked the board to approve this contract, subject to town council's review. He currently has it. I was hoping to receive a response from him. Certainly if there are any changes, edits, I will share that with the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I thought we already approved.
You awarded the contract, so the notice of award was signed at our last meeting. This is the actual contract.
Well, but is there any?
Change?
Any issue or potential issue here? Looks like all boilerplate.
Pretty much.
Excuse me.
Town Council still has to approve it as of form.
So we'll wait, all right.
Can I ask a question? Did that go out to bid?
Yes.
Cleaning services?
Yeah.
Yes, it did.
Yes.
It was awarded to SJ Services.
SJ Services Incorporated. Compact Community Initiative.
We discussed this at a previous meeting. We had, Board of Selectmen agreed we would look at our financial situations and offer that as a request for technical support. That application was submitted a couple of weeks ago. I'm just waiting to hear back from the Department of Revenue.
Okay. You mean?
That will.
Oh, okay, okay. Does that come from the Department of Revenue?
It does. It does. They.
So it's the governor's.
Well, it is, but the Department of Revenue is overseeing it. It's submitted, the application is submitted to them, they review it.
Colonial Power Proposal. We've met with Colonial Power earlier. We've had discussion about them serving as an aggregator for the town of Hatfield. People who choose not to participate can simply decline. It's a way to potentially save folks money on their, on their electric bill.
I prepared two motions, one for the aggregation plan.
Right.
The other is the consultant agreement.
So is there a motion to approve the aggregation plan for the town of Hatfield as outlined by, and prepared by Colonial Power Group Incorporated?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion, enter into a consultant agreement for management of the town's municipal aggregation program and energy-related services between Colonial Power Group Incorporated and the town of Hatfield.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. That's great.
Can I ask a question, Mike?
Sure.
Do you, gentlemen, know, have they been awarded outward permits and is that project going to go forward? Because.
We're talking about now Colonial Power.
Yeah, I know.
This is, this is an aggregation.
Well, they can't do anything until the Selectmen authorize the agreement.
We're not talking about the pilot?
Wasn't, that was a pilot, was it?
Oh, no, no.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
It's not.
But I have a related question, though. When will this start? What's the timeframe?
Well, there's a whole, there's a whole series of things. The public information program has to occur, telling everybody what's involved. There's a whole series of actions, so it's going to take probably a few months here before.
There's a public review and comment period, Mike? So we'll, actually, I'll post it tomorrow on the bulletin board, submit it to the town clerk.
Well, there's a sheet here that, vote and authorization to become a public aggregator, develop a plan in consultation with the OER, that's the state's energy resources. Review of the plan, that's what we've just done, vote of the plan by the Selectmen, that's what we've just done. Now we have to submit this to D O E R for approval. There's a public hearing on the plan, a selection date for receipt of price terms from competitive suppliers, selection of competitor supplier by the town, notification of enrollment to eligible customers. There's an opt-out period of 30 days.
I think that's key.
And on and on, but it's a whole, it's a whole, so it's not going to happen overnight. Fire department permit fees.
Record to note that I recuse myself from any discussion.
Let me, I'll.
Doesn't mean I have to leave the room. I recuse myself from any discussion.
There are a couple of questions about some of the fees and, and the chief, Chief Ron has presented before the board and provided the backup information supporting the fee adjustments. There really hasn't been all that much issue about the fees themselves, but there were some questions about how, where those fees go. Do they go directly to the fire department for their use and their budget, or do they go simply to the town? And the answer is, they go to the town. They don't, they don't go, they're not fees that they take and just, you know, as a slush fund or something like that. It goes to the town treasury. And the second thing, and there was concern about controls on, on payments. For example, at the transfer station, by and large, we require checks in, as a, a good financial management practice, a internal control thing, so folks aren't handling cash. And I think there was some concern that there was not an acknowledgement being given that, as for example, when you buy transfer station stickers, you get a little receipt from the administrative office here. But in fact, there is a little signature at the bottom of the page that the person is given when they make their payment. So they are getting, when they, when they get their permit, they are getting, in essence, a receipt that a payment has been made, an acknowledgement. So there are internal controls on those payments. If Stephen was here, we'd probably say that a little better, but.
Well, and I think it's fair to say that that's for all departments. We do the same thing, you know? Wasn't just, for clarification.
Riverway bike tour?
I discussed with the police chief regarding this Riverway ride that will take place June 3rd through the 5th and August 12th through the 14th, and he does not have any problems with that. He does not see any issue with traffic.
All we're talking about here is a group of riders, about 26 participants. They'll be coming through town and they were just alerting all the communities in which they're passing through. They're going from, I think they're going up to Brattleboro, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, from, between Northampton.
Between Northampton and Brattleboro.
And backways, so.
Just involves 26 participants.
And they'll be going through Hatfield, so the chief knows it.
That was actually nice of them to give us the heads up.
Something to make you aware of that.
Often have more than that coming through without any notice.
Correct.
Right.
Smith Academy Park acceptance.
Right. So the board just needs to vote as this appears in front of you?
At town meeting, town meeting voted for the, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the site of the former Smith Academy site and for park purposes, development of a park. Part of that is get the trustees focused with their funds and efforts on focusing on education, not managing a park. And it probably makes a better sense to have it under the town. Part of that, though, is an agreement that the trustees have asked the Board of Selectmen to acknowledge regarding acceptance of that. And there are the kinds of things that were also brought up at town meeting. That is, maintenance within the park of a monument, it's a Sophia Smith that's already there, keeping the cornerstone from the former Smith Academy that's there, and essentially maintaining it in some decent order. So there, we're being asked to accept this donation of approximately one acre of land.
Am I correct in assuming that that will be within the responsibility of?
Yes.
The DPW?
Yes.
Can I, Marlene, I have one question. Legal, I wanted to inject into that first paragraph, subject to the availability of funds, maintain the property as a park and keep same and good order?
Number one.
Right.
Subject to.
Availability of funds. I mean, if, we had a crisis in town and there was.
Or we go down, we go down to North Street or up to Maple.
Bringing ambulance.
Okay. Town Council drafted this, so I will go back to him. I'll discuss this with him.
Well.
Do you want to postpone that until the next meeting?
Oh, gosh.
He's had communication with the, with Lydia as representative of the trustees and prepared this. So I think in all fairness, they should be aware of this.
Well, can we do this contingent? And if council finds it unacceptable, we'll adopt the, adopt the language as.
I think it only makes sense to have that language in there, though, just, I mean.
I mean, there could be some crisis that, there's no money to do parks this year, I can't imagine, but.
Right.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
Will there be incorporated into this or a separate document in terms of deed transfer? A specific deed transfer where the, you know, there's, you've got the measurements of that land and the ownership is now going from Smith Academy trustees to the town of Hatfield and ought to be recorded, I would think, in the registered deeds. You know, I'm assuming that that would happen at some point?
Yes.
In this process? Yeah.
There will be. But would you say is specific to the perimeters, the?
Yeah, yeah, the dimensions of that property.
Thank you.
The council will take care of that, Marlene.
This was something the trustees have asked to be, have some assurance that we're not just going to let it, let it go.
Why don't we just forward the, before we make a final move on this, forward the information or analysis by town council to the trustees, so they're right from the get-go. They know exactly what's happening.
Is there some, some, something urgent driving that we close on this tonight, then? If we do what Pat says to, as opposed to doing.
I'm not aware of any urgency. I just think that, you know, with, with the passage at annual town meeting.
Keep the ball rolling.
Yeah, to just move forward with it.
Two weeks isn't going to make a big difference, is it? I mean, we're talking two weeks, am I correct? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that should be significant.
All right, well, let's, all right, we'll just see if there's any issue with, subject to the availability of funds, maintain the property.
Do you want to vote on that as a motion and then we just sign it afterwards? You know, Marlene can let us know when she clears that up, or how do you want to deal with it, Joe? Or what do you think, I guess, is fair?
Just, let's let her get the reading and then we'll just act on it and be done with it.
At the next meeting, okay.
We'll act on it at the next meeting, yeah.
It shouldn't take two seconds to.
Yeah. Okay.
Of course, you never know. Agreement for payment in lieu of taxes, Hatfield Renewables. This is, again, town meeting, follow-up. We got blessing from an earlier town meeting to conduct negotiations, subsequently negotiations were conducted. We've developed a, an agreement for the payment, and this is for personal property, not, not the land that's getting taxed separately.
That property is identified on the last page as Exhibit C.
Right, and it starts off at first annual payment is $23,000 in contract year one. And it's a 20-year contract and it goes up to $33,507. With, it's a 2% kicker every year. It's 10, it's 10,000 per 2.3 megawatts and then, again, that 2% kicker every year escalation. So this been coordinated with legal, it's what we've reviewed previously.
Council has approved.
It's a motion to approve?
We're good to expedite this.
Second.
Second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, for your hard work on that one.
Do you want to talk about this other item?
I'm sorry.
Commission on disability.
It's in your packet, you receive this letter.
In the week, the days right around town meeting, we suddenly got, I won't say a flood, but a series of communications from the Massachusetts office on disability, asking or, well, requesting that we consider local adoption of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8A and Chapter 40, Section 22G, to establish a commission on disability. And of course, it was too late for, for town meeting, which.
You had already posted the warrant.
It needs to be acted upon, but I think it's a, what, five to nine-person? First, town meeting has to agree to accepting, accepting this law, these two provisions of law. And then it would entail establishing a committee, I think it's five to nine members. And who would make recommendations regarding things that they would recommend be done, undertaken, or projects, or changes, or whatever. To include assess, to improve accessibility, mobility, those kinds of things for persons with disabilities. So we can't really do anything right now to take it under advisement and bring it back up as we consider items for our next town meeting.
Right, that's right, we can't do anything, but I just wanted to put it out there on the table. It, it does encourage better organization. There's two statutes, one allows you to charge a, a fine and those fees could be used by the commission for improvements for handicap expenses related to improvements for handicap accessibility.
So we'll just take that under advisement for now. Oh.
Bring that up at all of your time.
Well, as we move toward.
Right.
Closer to town meeting.
When we have a town meeting.
We skipped over an item, I apologize. Town Hall. Again, follow-up from town meeting. Public floor. Kind of a way ahead.
A couple of weeks ago, I had a conference call with, with Kevin Shea and Brian had sat in on that conference call. We had discussed moving forward and one thing I'd, I'd like to recommend is maybe what we do, ask the offices on this floor and the offices downstairs, Council on Aging, Building Inspector, to track the number of, of people that come to their office or visitors to the Council on Aging. Just be interested to know that the number of people accessing the offices on this floor and downstairs as well.
Yeah, part of the conversation was to try to get a somewhat accurate number of the folks coming to town hall. For all three floors. As we know, there's a lot of discussion at town meeting from, from the public, but I think we need to make it clear, to be perfectly honest, that, you know, the ramp to the building, the ramp of the future for the building is for the entire public to access all of town hall. It's not for one particular floor or one particular department. That's number one. Number two is that we are going to be liable, potentially, to pay fines if Phase Two does not get underway and get completed by fall of 2018.
September, when, September?
September. The fines can be $1,000 to $1,500 per.
Violation.
Per violation. So if you have five violations, that's $7,500 potentially per day that the state could, could, you know, could fine the town. So on that call with Kevin, who's helping us with the design phase, I, I, you know, I personally heard, heard what the people in the, in the audience were saying at town meeting. And I just think it's important that the people at town meeting, the people in town hall and the residents of Hatfield understand the big picture and understand the whole scope of the project. And I think if everybody doesn't listen to rumors or innuendo and understands what, what the real project entails and what needs to be done, it'll, it'll just come together and, and be much, be much better representation of the townspeople at a whole. And quite frankly, by delaying this, because it's a two-step process, it's a vote at town meeting and it's a vote at the ballot box, we're now just lost an entire year of, of moving forward with Phase Two. Phase Two has also been a known entity since Phase One was rolled out. You know, when you have a Phase One, you know there's a Phase Two coming, right? And, and it's been talked about well before I was on the board or since Pat was on this time. So it, it's not a surprise, quite frankly. So having said all that, we can't go back, we can only all move forward. And I think we just need to move forward as a town, as a community and as the town hall departments and do what we have to do to get this resolved.
Yeah, the other.
Thank you.
No, no, that's fine, thank you. A couple of other points. I thought, I thought it was clear at the meeting, but talking to folks afterward. We're not talking about 48 people coming to lunch down there, downstairs in the COA area every day. Most of those folks are coming to either see the director or assistant or participate in exercise classes. The other, there was one other, oh, the, the 40% loss in space is not a 40% loss of the COA area. It's a 40% loss supposedly of the food preparation area. That same area was the area used to prepare food for all of the old center school, all of the old Smith Academy and all of the old Milkman School students in that one area. So we're talking about an area of maybe, maybe four to five feet of what's now essentially counter space, which the designer said he could readily replicate just over a little bit. And there are other, other possibilities that we could address for the Council on Aging if that's a major stumbling block, like relocating the building inspector and opening up that area and put the building inspector over into former police area, but we have to make that ADA compliant, we had a waiver on that because we were moving the police out of here. So there are some other things to do, but, you know, is that really the best use of that space? Is that really needed? And it might be better for them to try this realignment within the confines of their space and then see when we build out the entire area for COA, for example, how it might be best used. What's, is that, is that the best use or are there, are there other better uses for that space?
Do we know how many?
Oh, sorry, Pat.
Go ahead.
Nope, you go ahead.
And I think at this point in time, so that we don't revisit the problems we had along the way, is that the players, the impact is, is going, this is going to have on individuals and groups, they've got to be part of the process.
Oh, absolutely.
To begin with. Unfortunately, no offense, Jeff or Brian, my colleagues on the board, I don't believe that took place up front. And we wouldn't be having that, this discussion now if it did. So let's, let's do it and do what we know needs to be done, but we've got to communicate that message. And they have to be players in that process. Because otherwise, we're going to be back here again next year.
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
Well, we know we don't have the votes at town floor.
Well, well, there's another piece to this. Well, I acknowledge certainly communication could be better. I think that, quite frankly, the thinking was this phase was not COA's phase or the museum's phase. This phase was simply a small area in the food preparation area, only, which doesn't know, which no longer even prepares food. Delivered, delivered food from the elder services. Highland Valley Elder Services, it's, they don't even, they don't even really prepare, might heat up something, but they're delivered, already made. So their needs are different than what that area once supported. But I think the original thinking was, this is a very minor impact, which was a mistake to assume that it was be, be perceived as a minor impact on the Council on Aging and, and the thought was, their requirements are going to be part of the definition for, for this third phase. But you're, you're absolutely right, they need to be part of the process and.
Let's just try to eliminate as much of the potential or actual negatives and we can look at the project down the road and see it moving smoothly, that's all. And fault is, is not the point here. What is the best way to bring this project to fruition?
Right.
That's the question.
Yeah, another, another piece, we have an opportunity perhaps this fall after free cash is certified to readdress this whole matter, because we'll have a significant amount, we have a significant amount of cash coming in from tax title and, and also back from D O R, so. And so you could, we could, coincidentally, even though we were trying to get this to happen in May, as it turns out now, with additional tax title, might be able to really bring down that debt exclusion amount, which would make also a significant difference for folks. And as well replenish some of our stabilization funds. So you're right, we have another opportunity here, we need to make the best of it in all respects.
Bring the players in, that's all.
Bring the players in.
And, and.
Keep the lines of communication open and include discussions, future discussions, everybody's included.
It's more than a communication issue with them, it's participation.
Patient, right, that's right, Mike is right.
I think, I think that they've got to, they've got to see this Phase Two in the context of the whole plan, including Phase Three and how it impacts them and, you know, and Pat's absolutely right, you know, you've got to get them involved and let them become supporters of what has to be done in order to reach Phase Three. And, and if they're on your side, then it's going to happen. The other, the other player, and this is the state, and, you know, I.
We're already reaching out.
At some point, you guys would communicate with the ARB or whatever it is and let them know what's transpired and what your plan is going forward and that, you know, right now it looks as though if this all happens next May, you only have a year to, to be able to complete this and, you know, what can they do? Is there any opportunity for some sort of an extension or whatever?
Well, we haven't addressed this, but I'd strongly look at this fall after our free cash is certified as an opportunity to come back just because of the timeline, like you're talking about. It gets too tight, the more you push it off, and potentially costs can go up again, so.
Right, but the state probably should be informed at this point as to what's transpired and, and.
We're, we're doing, that part's going on and, in fact, our, the designer, Kevin Shea, has been very helpful because he's done this before, working informally with the staff at the Architectural Access Board. And that, that's already, that initial cut has already occurred, so. So we're working that part as well. Mrs. Mashatsky, do you have anything else?
I just have some unanticipated new business that came up after we had posted the agenda. I had received some communication from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. They had been working with a broad coalition of municipalities on a proposed forest legacy designation. And included, attached to that email is a proposed letter, they're asking communities to put on, on town letterhead if so choose to, you know, accept this.
I'd like to have, I'd suggest, how about we have conservation and open space, take a look at that.
Input from them?
And give some nod.
Yep.
If they're supportive or.
Comments.
If there's some, yeah, any comments that might, might help us.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree.
I have a, an old item. Utility bills. How are we?
Well, I had talked with Phil earlier today.
The issue, we've had this, it seems to be recurring and not fixed. And maybe it's.
Right.
My ignorance. I thought we had fixed it once. What it is, we get a bill, for example, in telephones, and earlier we were sending in a check and apparently they put all that money against the first bill and everybody else is delinquent. And then, didn't they begin to send separate checks for separate bills?
That's correct, we are doing that for utility companies.
For utilities.
For utility companies, we are sending separate checks.
Okay, well.
And it has been addressed at the department head meetings and.
So, so phone is now taken care of, communications are taken care of? How about electricity?
They are getting paid if the invoice is submitted. If the invoice is not submitted before the, to give enough time for us to process it and meet the due date, then that becomes a problem.
They are aware of the timeframe at this point, Marlene? I thought.
Department heads should, or whoever is processing the invoices.
You and I talked about this and I got the distinct impression that things were on board at this point.
That's right.
If that's not the case, then we need to revisit it quickly.
There needs to be accountability by the department head or the individual processing the invoices. The accountant, when he receives it, he processes payment. If it's held on to, if the invoice is held by the department and not submitted for a week or two weeks, it becomes an issue. We're also having a, a problem with overpayments. So you need to take, the departments need to take a look at the actual invoice. If there's a past due amount, you need to research that. Was it paid, did it cross in the mail, you need to determine. That's being ignored and some departments are just paying the current charges and the previous balance is not getting paid. That's, that's the problem.
If I may, having a little background, having worked for a major telecommunications company at one time, I think what, what Jeff said is, is exactly correct, which is, I think sometimes the payments are getting applied to a single billing account telephone number, which is why some are probably showing in arrears, even though I might have signed off that my department, yeah, this is good, I sent it in to, through the process within the town. And so I think I'm good because I did my part. I don't necessarily know whether it got paid or not till the next bill comes out, right? It's going to show in arrears, but I know that I already sent something internally to my department, so it mustn't have just caught up yet. So I think, quite frankly, I think it's a simple solution. It's just a matter of everybody has to get, you know, a list of the gas bills for every department, list of the electric bills for every department, list of the phone bills for every department. And then just, you know, I don't mean you, but, you know, and then we know monthly how many we're supposed to get and which department is supposed to get. And then we let them know that you should be on the lookout for, you know, your police department's going to get five, five bills, billing telephone numbers or whatever, I mean.
Yeah.
Every city in town goes through this, so there's got to be a process.
Some departments don't have a problem at all.
Right. So we, so the departments that are having. So we, so the departments that are having the problem should follow what the departments who aren't having the problem procedures.
Correct.
There you go.
Well, I've just...
How's that?
Correct.
I know, it sounds...
It's very simple.
That's why I get frustrated, because it should be simple. Pay your, pay your bills.
It's very simple.
Well, I think, I would say that it was, I think sometimes it's probably, and I'm, I'm sort of guessing at this, I'm thinking that some departments' bills are probably paid for out of a different budget, not necessarily their own. And, and so that could be where a little bit of the breakdown of who's, who, you know...
Needs to be clarification, who's going to process it.
Right, if you're paying my, if you're paying my bill, I should probably still see the bill and say, yeah, that looks right, and then give it to you. I shouldn't assume that you're getting it, right?
Right, right.
And you shouldn't assume that I'm getting it, because you know, you know what I mean? So I just, I really just think it's going to be, just got to get on track.
Well, I, I bring it up because it seems simple, but it seems to be recurring and not fixed.
Right.
I'm not here to say what the answer is, but it needs to be fixed, and we'd like to hear the answer. We had an incident within the past few weeks where a utility company came to shut off the gas. Now, it didn't make that much difference today, it may have been cold, cold water instead of hot water in that place, but had it been the middle of winter, could have been broken pipes, it could have been on and on and on. So, and, and the person, the department head only knew about it because the guy from the gas company had the courtesy to knock on a door to say, I'm here to shut off your gas.
If he had not been there.
If he had not been there, it would have been shut off.
It wouldn't have been shut off, yeah, absolutely.
So, it's just something which seems very simple and appreciate if we get it taken End-of-year dates with FinCom?
I'm proposing, well, I'm looking at, I had a discussion with the accountant today, and we're looking at wrapping everything up that last week in June, beginning of July, and if we, I did plug in some dates on your agenda, I don't know if the board is considering meeting one, one time in July and one time in August, but if we, if we meet on July 12, we can take up with the finance committee and any year-end shortfall.
We have to have it done prior to the 15th.
Before the 15th, right. So that's why I'm recommending we do it at the 12th.
So, do we have to wait till...
Well, last year, if you remember, I did try to do it earlier, and then we found there was still, so we had to meet again. So the 12th is, we're still before the 15th. That gives us plenty of time. It does, as long as it's before the 15th. The 12th is not a problem.
All right.
Not a problem.
It would be okay to get it done earlier if we could.
Yes, absolutely, it would.
Okay, well, we need a date that the FinCom is also agreeable to, because they have to bless our action.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
The 12th.
July 12.
All right.
So that will be our only meeting in July?
Have the finance committee come in it?
That was the plan. That's the idea, that they would meet with us on the 12th.
We need, we need to circle the wagons to talk about the center school action.
Well, I was going to get back to that. So I'm, I'm developing a timeline, and as you know, I'm going to be meeting with the, with the engineer, and, and Phil will be there as well, right? You'll be present for that? So, you know, we'll have some more information, but yes, we, absolutely, we, we need to, to move forward this, on this, and there has been discussion, communication.
Let's back up for a moment here.
Yes, sir.
You've ended, alluded to June, June 12.
I'm sorry, I was talking about July, July 12.
Okay, so the 14th is still on.
Yeah, yeah.
June.
Oh, June 14th and June 28th.
Yeah, those are both still on.
For meetings?
Right.
Yeah.
This is, this is...
That's the one.
We need to meet with the finance committee. Remember from first of May through the 15th, May to 15th, July?
July 12th is a Tuesday.
We can move funds that cover any deficits. We can move funds around at the end of the fiscal year. No, but we do need a session here somewhere to talk about, get our act together internally regarding center school.
Absolutely.
Well, before the 14th.
We can do that.
Can we?
Before June 14th.
Yeah.
We can do that. You want to schedule a meeting next week, then? Is that what you, you want to have a, a meeting just for that?
Just, just for that purpose? Would that be all right?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I defer to my colleagues, I, really.
Yeah.
If it works for them, it works for me. I'll make it happen. It's easier.
So next Tuesday?
No, I can't, I've got two doctor's appointments. Pat's driving me to the doctor.
Are you sure you want me to drive? You may have internal problems before then, if you've seen my driving. Oh my God, it's on TV.
What's good for, what's good for everybody else?
Do Wednesday?
I cannot do Wednesday evening.
Cannot do Wednesday, okay.
I can do Wednesday during the day. I mean, I'm guessing, I'm guessing this is going to be like a one-hour meeting.
Would you like to do that?
Yeah, just only such as...
Oh, okay.
Or Tuesday, well, Jeff's got appointments, but it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, then perfect, a daytime meeting?
Yeah.
Around noon?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Lunch provided.
Wednesday?
Wednesday, June 8th.
I'm sorry?
June 8th.
June 8th.
And sole subject to be...
At noon.
Yeah.
Center school.
They give you a chance to grab lunch?
Center school.
Can make it later.
I'll have sandwiches here for us.
Oh.
Be a working lunch.
Yeah.
You'll send out a reminder of that?
I will. I have to post the board, too.
Yeah. That's the eighth.
Phil, anything else we should know?
Okay.
Okay, you have any?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For doing that, yeah, I appreciate that.
Marlene, anything else?
I, I do not have anything else. That is it. Oh, I do have one other thing. Dragon property. So the closing did happen last Thursday or Friday, and town council's preparing a certificate of title. So I have notified Mark Delott that that has taken place. You know, there's two pieces of land we're acquiring, and that's been in the works for such a long, long time, so...
Okay. Question to your turn?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Yay.
Thank you.